Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the regular council public hearing meeting to order. And counsel, if I could have adoption.
I'll move the minutes of May 29.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
And move counsel and committee of May 29.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes of the regular council land use, May 29.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move the regular council of public hearing, May 29.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And before we start the public hearing portion of the meeting, I would like to take a moment to recognize and honor an individual who has contributed so much to our city. For the past 11 years, Marilyn Herman has been the executive director of the Surrey Food Bank. To say she has made an immense mark in helping the less fortunate in our community is a vast understatement. Aside from leading the food bank, Marilyn also sits on the boards of Food Bank Canada and the Surrey Homelessness and Housing Society. And under her tenure, the Surrey Food Bank has expanded the Tiny Bundles program and has added new programs such as the seniors depot, the toddler totes program, and a hamper delivery for those with mobility issues. And on behalf of counsel, Marilyn, I see you in the audience, I want to commend you for all of the work that you have done for our community and for your enormous and numerous contributions to our city as a whole. Your selfless dedication has made Surrey a better place to live and to work. And ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a well-deserved round of applause for the incredible passion and vision that Marilyn has brought as being the executive director And Marilyn, if you could come forward, we would like to honor you with both a wonderful bouquet of flowers, but more importantly, a certificate of recognition from the city.[157.44][157.44](MORNING SOUNDS).[161.19][161.19](APPLAUSE).[164.12][164.12](MORNING SOUNDS).[171.12][171.12](APPLAUSE).
Get the flowers and Bruce.[183.12][183.12](LAUGHTER).
Bruce, yeah.[185.12][185.12](LAUGHTER).[186.12][186.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Marilyn. (APPLAUSE).
bylaw number one, please.
Is the Surrey Heritage Revitalization Bylaw 19279. The address is 1892288th Avenue, and the applicant is the City of Surrey. The applicant is seeking to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement on the property in order to allow renovations and a two-story addition to the Port Kells Fire Hall, number seven, and to allow for additional uses including Heritage Museum, Union Office, and an event hall.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There is no one signed up to speak to this bylaw, nor any correspondence. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the first bylaw on the agenda this evening? Madam Clerk, bylaw number two.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19272. The address is 5784146A Street. The applicants are Jatinder Garcha and Neelam Shahai. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from half-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into three single-family lots facing 58th Avenue. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot width, east-side yard setbacks for proposed Lot 2, and to reduce the front yard setbacks for proposed lots 1 to 3 in order to allow for a consistent streetscape along the south side of 58th Avenue.
Thank you. We do have someone signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there a Bruce Lepke to speak to this? Good evening, sir. Your address for the clerk?
Do you have to press the button?
No.
I looked at the Surrey website today, and there's a lot on there about sustainability and beautification and things of that nature. I don't understand myself how tearing down a perfectly good house with well-maintained trees and taking truckloads and truckloads of waste to the dump, and then taking truckloads of waste to the dump from building three new homes fits in the line of sustainability and being green and things of that nature. If this was an old tear-down house that we've all seen all around Surrey, people in the community would say, wonderful, get rid of it, it's going to make these three new homes are going to make the community better. But in this case, it's not, and the new homes won't fit in with the half-acre homes that are currently running down that street with old established trees. So I'm against this development.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number two this evening?
Yeah.
I see a few hands. Okay, ma'am.
My address is 5901146th Street.
And could we have your name, please, for the clerk?
Sukjeet Nagar.
Thank you.
And I'm for this project because if you look along 58th Avenue, all the homes are new, and that's one of the only older homes facing that's on that street. So I think, in my opinion, it's going to better the value of all the homes around it because, you know, with the old house gone and the newer construction, newer houses being put in, it'll just make the neighborhood that much better.
Thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
And there's a gentleman at the back. Yes, sir?
My name is Jerry Jensen, and my property abuts this proposed development you're talking about. I'm the next house to it. I'm against it, of course, because it's changing the nature of our whole street. And this house, as the previous speaker said, this house that's on that property is not what you would call an old house. It's a lovely renovated house. And besides being against it, if it does go through, one thing I would please ask you, please, there's hedge trees between this house and my house. I would like them left there for sure if this development takes place.
You're immediately, sir, to the south?
My address is 5762146A Street.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sir?
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 Sir, for our questions.
If I could just ask you a quick question. Those hedge trees, are they right on the property line? Are they on your property, or are they on the subject property?
They're right adjacent to the fence, but they're on the property, not ours, but on the property that's being subdivided.
Right, okay.
But those trees have been there for 40 years, and they're healthy hedge trees, and I prune my side. And if they're taken down and they start building three houses, it's going to be hell on wheels for my family.
No, I appreciate your concern. I just wanted to just get a sense of where they were. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Villanueva. Sir?
Can I ask? Hello?
You're...
He's popular.
You can't get away that quickly, sir.
So is your address on 146A Street, is it?
Yes, 5762.
And so are the other properties in the area the same age homes as yours in the corner? Us looking at subdivision?
Most of the houses on our street are of a similar age, but they've all been really well taken care of, and the majority of them have had an awful lot of money spent in renovations on them.
So your expectation isn't that other properties on that street are going to want to redevelop into smaller homes?
Well, I'm just saying that three homes on that lot, with the center home of them not even on a 50-foot piece of lot, it's a 45-piece, it isn't going to do any great things for our street.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
You are excused, sir. Thank you so much for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else on second? Okay, sir? Sir, anyone else after this gentleman? Okay, you, sir? Okay, you'll be the final speaker, Mr. Comter.
It's Daryl Boyd, and I live at 5717146A Street, the corner of 57 and 146A, halfway through.
Okay.
I don't know if any of you have ever traveled down that cul-de-sac, but it's like a park. And here's things like an old house and everything else. The money that's been spent on that street in renovations is unbelievable. When I look at this, the way it's set up, and you have the park across the street, and then you have three brand-new houses right across from the park, there's enough traffic going through there now, and there's things like we need speed bumps, but that's another topic in that. But it's little children walk through there all the time from daycare centers, and they use it as like walking through a park. There's no hydro lines or streetlights or anything. It's just like walking down a lane. So our concern is, is this going to start changing our neighborhood? I mean, that will definitely take away from the corner, and like I said, we're concerned about that. Okay?
Okay, thank you, sir, for your comments.
Before I leave, any questions?
I have no one on the list here.
Huh? I, like I said, you know, any of you happen to live in the area or on the way home, just take a run down that street and have a look at it, because there's nothing around us left like that. Okay?
Thank you. You, sir, are the last speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Mike Comter from Hub Engineering, we're the agent on this project. So just to look at some of the comments that were made tonight. If we look at the area in general, we can see that the lots along the east-west road are all RF lots. As you go east and to the north, you'll notice that there are RF-12 lots, which are small lots in size. So when originally we met with planning department, it was indicated to do three lots fronting onto 146A Street, which would create the necessary width for the lots, because the lot is deeper than it is wide. So having discussed that with planning, it was decided to reorient the lots so that they face in the north-south direction, which is what the application is before counsel tonight. And one of those lots is slightly narrower than the 50-foot or 15-meter width that's required for the RF-type zone. So we're trying to keep the nature of the cul-de-sac by having a side yard facing onto 146th Street instead of the frontages of the lots facing onto 146th Street. As the gentleman mentioned, I mean, obviously, development is up to the individual property owners on the street, if they choose to develop or not. So if they choose not to develop, they can maintain the nature of the street the way it is. With regards to the neighbor and the hedge, that's something that we can consider retaining. It's situated on the subject property, but we'll retain the hedge for the neighbor. The remainder of the property will be protected as well. The hedge goes about halfway along the property line, and then there's some trees at the back of the property, so we can retain that hedge for his purposes. So if there's any questions?
The idea was to orient it the same way the properties to the east and the west?
Correct. So originally, we had them oriented east-west. The way you see on the next cul-de-sac to the right on the screen in front of you, that easily achieves the 50-foot or the 15-meter widths that are necessary for the zoning requirements. By rotating or orienting them in the south's direction, it's about a foot shorter than it needs to be, hence the variance request for the one lot. This way visually, if you drive down the cul-de-sac, you'll be looking at the side of a house as opposed to the frontages of the houses.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, bylaw number three.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19273. The address is 6625152A Street. The company ownership is 0720485BC Limited. The applicant is seeking to amend Comprehensive Development Bylaw Number 17404 in order to allow the development of a two-story multi-tenant business park building with a small-scale drugstore as a permitted use on the site. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the front west and the side north yard setbacks and reduce the minimum separation requirement between the proposed small-scale drugstore and existing drugstores from 400 meters to 340 meters. These variances would create a pedestrian-friendly streetscape and allow a small-scale drugstore to complement services offered by the proposed medical offices.
We have no correspondence, nor anyone signed up to speak to bylaw three this evening. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? This is my last call. Madam Clerk, number four.
Zoning amendment bylaw 19274. The address is 5924147th Street. The applicant is 1094175BC Limited. The applicant seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential 13. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into six single-family lots with portions of proposed Lot 2 remaining undeveloped until future consolidation with the adjacent property at 5930147th Street. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot depth from 24 meters to 22 meters for the proposed Lot 1, and lot width from 13.4 meters to 13.1 meters for proposed lots 5 and 6 in order to develop functional lots.
There is no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number four on our agenda tonight? Last call. Madam Clerk, next bylaw.
Is zoning amendment bylaw number 19275. The address is 5964142nd Street. The applicant is 1066879BC Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to multiple residential 30. The applicant is proposing to develop 18 townhouse units on this site. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the front, rear, and side yard setbacks in order to achieve a more livable rear yard and a more urban pedestrian landscape.
No correspondence, nor anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to bylaw five tonight? Madam Clerk, next bylaw.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19276. The address is 1411559A Avenue. The applicants are Raj Sandeep and Simrat Verk. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential 10. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two single-family small lots and one park lot to be purchased by the city for future completion of the Panorama Greenway.
No correspondence, nor anyone signed up for bylaw six tonight. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? Last call. Madam Clerk, bylaw seven.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19277. The address is 6170142nd Street. The applicant is Gag Lumber Limited. The applicant seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to single-family residential 13. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the site into 38 single-family small lots and one park lot. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the width of proposed lots 24 and 25 from 15.4 meters to 14.8 meters in order to accommodate the park lot.
And again, there's no one wishing to speak to this bylaw signed up, and we have no correspondence on table relative to it. Is there anyone wanting to speak tonight to bylaw seven? Okay, ma'am, please come forward. Your name and address, please, for the clerk.
Good evening. My name is Imali. I live in 16566299144th Street. I have a question for the new construction, because our children live in that area, and lots of children like to play in that area. So if the new construction was getting approved, our children have to stay at home, and that is the last green space for our children. And one more question is, the elementary school don't have enough space for more children. The traditional school in near that 62A Avenue, the waiting line is two years now. So and in that area, lots of new building is under construction, so I don't think we have enough reason for the new plan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Okay, Madam Clerk, next bylaw, please.
Zoning amendment bylaw 19280. The address is 5980146th Street. The applicants are Hardile and Canavere Sandu. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential 13. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into two single-family small lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to allow a double garage and driveway at the front of proposed Lot 2, as the rear lane access is not possible for this lot.
No correspondence on table, nor anyone signed up to speak to this. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the eighth bylaw on the agenda tonight? Madam Clerk, the bylaw number nine.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 19278. The addresses are 71457185194A Street and 1939272nd Avenue. The applicant is 1042384BC Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential to comprehensive development. The applicant is proposing to develop 83 townhouse units on the site.
Okay, on this one, we have four pieces of correspondence on table and one person wishing to speak who has correspondence on table as well. Byron Ritchie. Mr. Ritchie?
Good morning.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a presentation to counsel, if possible.
Someone move to get the information.
Second?
Second.
Second, or thank you. All those in favor, opposed, and that's approved. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, Madam Mayor and council members, I appreciate your time. I recently moved into the area and have just recently learned of the parking hazards of the Clayton Heights area. I quote a couple of the council members from previous dealings, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Gill, for their work in the area with the parking. The reason the opposition to this proposal is they haven't built in enough parking. They've offered 83 units they're asking for with two units per lot and 17 visitor parking. Common sense, if you walk around the area, you will find, I've included some photos, that was the photos taken were of a Saturday afternoon. For every approximately 10 vehicles, there's two that are commercial vehicles, would not fit in a local garage. We got the east-west on 72nd, as well as vehicles along 96, or sorry, 194th Street. As you can see, there's a number of commercial vehicles. There's also a number of, there's four, from driving around the neighborhood, proposed new developments coming into the area. In addition to the 83 that they're asking for, by my quick math, there's at least another 100-plus units, whether single residential or multi-townhouses, coming to the area. I've included some of the signs for the up-and-coming bylaws. What we're asking for is additional parking being built into the proposal. We request 20 additional parking spaces, 10 of them for oversized vehicle, and 10 of them for additional overflow parking of tenants. As we know, visitor parking in strata units, residents are not actually allowed to use those unless a visitor is coming. You can't park there every day. If we work by common sense math, one in 10 is a work vehicle, so it's an additional vehicle to a family. It would just, this complex as it is, would create additional parking hazards in an already congested, not hazard, but additional parking congestion in an already congested area.
Just for clarification, are you asking for this application to provide general parking for the neighborhood?
No, ma'am.
Just increased parking?
Increased.
For these 83 units?
Yes, like have their own parking lot onsite, so that if they have work trucks and whatnot, you know, that would not fit in a standard garage.
So that they don't impose on the neighborhood?
They're not creating additional parking.
That which is already, okay, gotcha. Thank you.
That's the happy medium, you know, versus outright opposing the bylaw. I understand development will happen, but that or work with the city on some kind of parking permit basis. As Mr. Hayes said, virtually everybody that comes to the area or commutes to the area has to drive.
The mayor's tenure vision does have a bus service coming to Clayton. If we could ever figure out how we're going to finally fund that vision, it's there.
I appreciate that.
It's next on the priority list.
Walking three blocks into SNOA this year to try to find a parking spot is...
Yeah, we're well aware of that. Counselor Gill?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to reiterate, just in terms of your math here, I do realize that there's 83 units, 79 of them are double garage, four of them are tandem. And generally, we see a bigger issue with parking when there's more tandem. So with almost 95% of the units being double garage, I just want to better understand your calculation in terms of additional parking that you're proposing or you're suggesting. Could you give me some context in terms of that element, please?
Different, common sense, sir. What I'm basing that on is there'll be different ages of family. As you have young teenagers moving to townhouse, they eventually learn to drive. Now you have a three-car family. Many people, if one in 10 has a work vehicle that they're attached to, plus their own personal car, now they're up to three vehicles. And again, the oversized issue. again, the oversized issue. Right, just from walking around the neighborhood, about one in 10, one in, or two in eight is a commercial oversight, not a commercial vehicle, but a larger vehicle that would not fit in a standard garage. So, I mean, the 20 was just a common sense request. I mean, I'd appreciate 30.
Madam Mayor, just for interest purposes, if we could just have engineering reiterate the parking requirements for this. I don't believe there's any DVP for any parking. And if we could just get staff to just kind of reiterate the, the additional parking that's required for guest parking.
And, and Mr. Engineer, or Mr. Planner, maybe we could put, put the layout up on the screen.
I'm not aware if there was a parking study done?
There. No, because I expect it fits our parking guidelines. Yes, sir?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. The site meets the residential parking requirements. They also have three surplus visitor stalls, so they require 17. They're providing 20 based on the zoning bylaw requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You okay, Counselor? Okay. Did you have more comments, sir?
I just, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this bylaw? Number nine, okay. At the back. Did I miss any hands?
Mayor and counsel, my name is Doug Johnson. I'm the architect on this particular project. One thing that will help, well, I think with the parking on this, is 194A, 194th Street will be completed as part of this project, and we will have additional street parking as well on 194.
Do you know how many?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Six, seven, eight. Thank you. I think we had another speaker over here.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Mike Comter, of Engineering. I'm the agent on this project. So to, just want to start off and indicate that an NCP was completed, or I guess, not a, not a complete NCP, but a plan was created a few years ago, which specifically redesignated the parcels of land that originally was known as Aloha Estates. And I guess it still continues to be called Aloha Estates. In that plan, this, these properties and the adjacent two properties and the one to the south are designated for townhouse development. The project being proposed tonight complies with that zoning, or that designation in the NCP. We're not asking for anything more than the NCP allows. In fact, the NCP could allow up to 30 units per acre based on the R M 30 zone. This density, I believe, and Mr. Planner can corroborate that for me, is somewhere around the 22 units per acre density. As part of the process, the road network was increased in this area to create additional roads to provide street parking. One of the additional roads is, I guess we'll call it 194th Street, which is a redundant road. We don't need it as a development, but it's being constructed to provide additional street parking that this gentleman so passionately is, is requesting. With that street, we'll probably generate about 12 parking stalls. 194A Street, we're still in discussion with engineering, but I believe it'll be street parking on 194A Street as well, which will bring us up to an additional 20 parking stalls on the road. As mentioned, the site itself complies with the city's zoning bylaw for townhouse development parking stalls, and in fact, there's additional parking stalls which the owner has prescribed for the project as well.
Counselor Hayne?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a question, I think, through to, to engineering, although the, the delegate may have done some traffic parking studies as well in and around the area. But my question is, looking to the east and to the north of the, the subject property, we see a lot of RF9Cs, the RF9 coach houses. And in the opinion of, of staff and the parking studies that have been done in this area, and I'm sure there's been numerous ones, as a land use, would you suggest that small lot, single-family, like the RF9s or RF9Cs versus townhouses, which, which create more pressure on, on street, on, on street parking in, in a community like this?
Counselor Hayne, to the chair. Although we have, we're currently completing a study for East Clayton specifically to look at this in detail. We've done some counts. We haven't finalized all the numbers. Anecdotally, we know that with the RF9C, we were running into more problems. Also, townhouses with tandem parking, as Counselor Gill mentioned, we created some problems for us. So we wanted a bit of time spent with more multifamily sites with side-by-side parking to get an assessment of this. We have done some studies and some counts. We're reviewing those reports now, and we'll be preparing a report for council. I believe Counselor Starchuk had requested this at a previous meeting. So we're in the middle of completing that report now. But anecdotally, we know that coach houses created some problems for us and the tandem parking as well.
And do you have a time estimate of when that report might be coming to council? I won't hold you to it, but just an estimate.
We are working with other departments on it as well with bylaw enforcement, but we expect before the break.
Thank you.
Sometime in July.
Thank you.
Counselor Gill just reminded me that it's often coach houses with a secondary suite that creates an exacerbated problem and isn't, isn't allowed actually in the city. Counselors, Starchuk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mike, can you maybe just elaborate on the, the Enerstar, or Energy Star building and what that will actually represent to those people that would be interested in, in living there and purchasing there?
Unfortunately, I'm not the person to ask. Maybe Doug can come up, and he's the architect. Maybe he can address that question for you.
Come on down.
Not to put Doug on the spot, but...
Basically, what it means is that we're going to be achieving a level of about 20% higher than normal standards for basically energy consumption on these buildings. And it's, there's a number of different ways you can do it. And certainly, when we get into the construction documents, we have to basically put that together, and it has to be something which you can physically measure so that you know that you're actually going to be achieving that kind of performance.
If, if I might be able to add, I'm more curious as to whether or not it's the energy rating of actually constructing the building, or the energy rating of actual consuming it as a, as the person that owns it?
It, it's basic, no, it's the actual operating unit. So it is the long-term operating costs.
Okay, thank you.
And efficiency of the buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Comter?
No, I think that's everything. I just want to add, with townhouses, there are no basements in these units, so there will not be any secondary suites. You're not allowed to secondary suites anywhere in a townhouse unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Madam Clerk, bylaw 10?
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18868. The address is 16641 18th Avenue. The applicants are Zhong, Chen, and Chow Ting. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential 13. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into nine single-family lots, and this application is proceeding with the applications at adjacent properties 16655 and 16687 18th Avenue.
And there's no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Anyone wishing to speak to bylaw 10? This is the last call.
Madam Clerk, next bylaw?
Zoning amendment bylaw 18869. The address is 16655 18th Avenue. The applicant is Zhong Sun. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential 13. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into nine single-family lots, and this application is proceeding with applications adjacent properties 16641 and 16687 18th Avenue.
And again, I have no one signed up to speak to this. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw 11? Next bylaw, Madam Clerk?
Zoning amendment bylaw 18870. The address is 16687 18th Avenue. The applicant is Yufan Chen, and the applicant is seeking to rezone property from one-acre residential to single-family residential 13, and is proposing to subdivide the property into nine single-family lots, and this is the last in the adjacent lots.
Anyone wishing to speak to bylaw 12 tonight? I have no, no letters on table and no one signed up. Madam Clerk, bylaw 13?
Zoning text amendment bylaw 19261. And this is to amend a zoning bylaw 199312,000 as amended in Part 1 definitions, Part 4 general provisions, and Part 5 off-street parking, loading and unloading, Part 36 community commercial zone, and in certain residential, commercial, industrial zones to incorporate Housekeeping amendments that correct references and grammar to clarifications, new policies to address emerging issues in regulating land use and development, and amendments to further clarify marijuana dispensaries as a permitted use as described in Corporate Report 2017 R 117.
And we have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Anyone wishing to speak to the final bylaw on our agenda this evening, number 13? Thank you, and that concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting. Committee reports, counselors?
Move the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee minutes of April 26, 2017 be received?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received from Seniors Advisory and Accessibility Committee, May 2nd, 17.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes to be received from the Agriculture and Food Security Advisory Committee, May 4, 2017?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the recommendations to be adopted?
Second.
And those in favor, opposed, carried. We have several proclamations this evening. The first one is National Blood Donor Week, June 12 through 17, whereas blood donors in Canada are the lifeblood of their communities, and their generosity should be honored as donating blood is a genuine act of altruism. Donors are not remunerated, and therefore, blood donation represents a truly selfless act. And whereas over half of Canadians will require blood or will know someone who will during their lifetime, yet less than 4% of eligible Canadians donate blood every year and support 100% of the national blood supply. Now therefore, I Linda Hepner do hereby declare June 12 through 17, 2017, as National Blood Donor Week in the City of Surrey. Amateur Radio Week, June 18 through 24, whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating over a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airways and has provided a bridge between peoples, societies, and countries by creating friendships and the sharing of ideas. And whereas the City of Surrey has several hundred licensed amateur radio operators who provide radio communications during emergencies and public service events. And whereas amateur radio operators are on alert for any emergency, local, regional, or worldwide, and donate their services without compensation. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Linda Hepner do hereby declare the week of June 18 through 24 Amateur Radio Week in the City of Surrey in recognition of this important emergency preparedness exercise. And the field day exercise will take place on June 24 and 25, demonstrating the radio amateur's skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communication. World Refugee Day, June 20, whereas Canada has a long history of helping and protecting refugees and is signatory to the 1951 United Nations Convention relating to the status of refugees and its 1967 protocol. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly unanimously adopted on December 4, 2000, a resolution naming June 20 every year as World Refugee Day to build awareness, empathy, support, respect. And whereas, World Refugee Day 2017 recognizes the strength, the courage, and the perseverance of millions of refugees and marks a key moment for the public to show support for families forced to flee. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Linda Hepner do hereby declare June 20, 2017, as World Refugee Day in the City of Surrey. National Aboriginal Day, June 21, 2017, whereas the City of Surrey believes that it is beneficial for all Canadians to recognize the contributions of the First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples in the development and prosperity of Canada and our city. And whereas the city recognizes that the fundamental strength in our community lies in our unique racial, ethno-cultural, and Aboriginal diversity, and the opportunity to learn more about the Aboriginal cultural heritage of Canada will assist in creating harmony among all Canadians to promote a greater appreciation and acceptance of each other's point of view. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Linda Hepner do hereby declare June 21, 2017, as National Aboriginal Day in the City of Surrey. Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Counselor LaFrank?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry to interrupt your stream of consciousness.
My proclamation reading?
My, your proclamation. I just wanted to remind people that National Aboriginal Day, we're hosting in partnership with the local First Nations, the Semiam, the Katzi, and the, and the Quantlin, the Aboriginal Day at Bridgeview. So it starts at 2:00, and it will be, host over 1,000 people at that event, and we're just thrilled to host that event, so.
Thank you. Surrey Pride Day, June 25, 2017, and it's particularly fitting today since this is the one-year anniversary of the incident in Florida last year. Whereas the City of Surrey is proud to be the home of ethnically and culturally diverse people who contribute to our strength and vitality. And whereas, there are hundreds of pride celebrations, festivals, and pride-related special events held in Canada throughout the year. And whereas, the pride celebration is targeted to the thousands of gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender individuals and families, including the heterosexual community, living within Surrey and the Fraser Valley area. And whereas, the event will provide an excellent opportunity for businesses, organizations, and entertainers to reach out and proudly support diversity. And whereas, the Surrey Pride Society and its many tireless volunteers provide education, support, and a safe environment for all people. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Linda Hepner do hereby declare June 25 as Surrey Pride Day in the City of Surrey. Now, moving on, counselors, to corporate reports.
Move corporate report R 118, acquisition of property at 10546 140th Street for the 105 Avenue Connector Project in the amount of $1,319,000.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 119, the closure of road allowance adjacent to 1265800th Avenue in the amount of $115,660.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 120, word of contract for the 104 Avenue sewer upgrades and pump station works to pottery contractors in the amount of $4,127,287.50.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 121, sponsorship request for the Surrey Hospice Society in the amount of $2,500.
Second. Okay, and all of these next few are grant requests. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 122, sponsor request to the annual 100-year journey in the amount of $6,000.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 123, funding request for the Westco Center for Learning in the amount of $2,000.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 124, late grant application to the Surrey Urban Farmer Market in the amount of $2,000.
Second. All those in favor, opposed... All those in favor, opposed. Counselor Starchak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in support of the grant application, I'd be remiss if I didn't speak to the Surrey Urban Farm Market and the buy local, support local, and knowing where your food comes from. It's Wednesdays, 2:00 to 6:00 o'clock, just on the other side of the Rec Center downtown Surrey.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And they have great, it's a great opportunity to get out and be amongst your neighbors as you're buying fresh Surrey produce. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 125, the South Street Athletic Park Bayside Rugby Facility partnership agreement for a rugby-related clubhouse.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Villeneux.
I was just wondering if staff could elaborate on this agreement with Bayside Rugby? And I'm trying to understand what the city's obligation is with the facility and what their obligation is to, in contrast to example Softball City, the differences.
Madam Mayor, to respond to Counselor Villeneux's question.
Thank you.
This has been a long time in the works, and this group wanted to establish some facilities to really grow their club. And there's a basic level of provision that the city provides in a park, so in terms of washrooms and change rooms. And in this facility, the city's investing $1.4 million. The Bayside Rugby Club wanted to add some amenities that would be specific to their club, and so that's above and beyond what the city would normally provide. So they have done some fundraising and also providing some services in kind that will contribute to the construction of the facility. So this agreement lays out how they can work with the city to advance this construction project, and then on an ongoing basis, how the facility will be operated to provide service to all of the park users, and how Bayside Rugby will continue to manage their space and cover the costs associated with that.
Okay, so they have space in the facility, but it's still our facility?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. It is the city's facility, and they're contributing to the capital, some of the capital portion of the building, and will assist in some of the ongoing operating expenses, but it will remain a city asset.
Good, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 126, the tree planting and removal report.
Second. Thank you. It was nice to note that we've planted some 200,000 trees when you had the two together, and the shade corridor is continuing to increase, even as we're taking trees down to construct homes for families. So thank you for that, and we'll make sure that the Counselor, who, I think that was Counselor Woods that directly requested that, that we flag that for him. Okay, all those, yes? Counselor Gill.
Madam Mayor, in Counselor Woods' absence, I'll take the opportunity to capitalize on his report. But certainly, it's really refreshing to really understand and have the numbers in front of us that in the last five years, in fact, we have planted 10,000 more trees than have come down. I think it's also really important to understand that there are a number of hazardous trees that would have come down otherwise, but certainly, I think we've made some really great progress in replanting in this great city. And I think the species that have been replanted will really contribute well to our shade. Absolutely. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Counselor, very much. And I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Madam Mayor, if I could remove or move corporate report R 127, appointment of approving officers, I believe they're Ron Gill and Sean Lowe. And I just wanted to say thank you to our very talented, soon-to-retire staff member, Judith Robson. And, you know, it's going to take two men to fill a position of one woman. So thank you very much for all your work that you've done over the years.
Well said, Counselor Gill. Can we have a second or for Counselor Gill's motion that says two men are going to fill Judith Robson's spot? All those in favor of the appointment of the approving officers. Opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 128, the award of contract for the Fleetwood Library and Recreation Centre building envelope remediation and re-cladding to Novocom building in the amount of $2,337,432.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, or that's carried?
Move corporate report R 129, the Sunnyside Heights NCP build-out elementary school capacity.
Second. Anyone wishing to speak to that? No, okay. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move corporate report R 130, the Rosemary Heights Central Neighborhood Concept Plan Review, and Madam Mayor, I'm moving it for.
Okay. Second or for on table?
For discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, on this particular report, I was a little bit confused. I think that staff really identified three different areas in terms of this report. One was the Suburban Pocket that crossed 155 to 156 and between 33 and 37. They also had a pocket that referenced an application from the McDonald's to the north. I believe that application was a 11-lot subdivision being proposed. And also the Retreat Center, which is also a 30-and-a-half-acre site. Madam Mayor, I think that I received amongst me, you, as my colleagues, received a compelling email over the weekend, and I do understand that there was a public information meeting as it relates to the McDonald's property and the 11 lots. Just given the small magnitude of that application, Madam Mayor, I really would like to see the application for the McDonald's be forwarded to council in the normal process based upon its merits and not be part of this application.
Half-acre? Was it a half-acre?
Yes. And Madam Mayor, I believe that the proposed subdivision is all half-acre gross-density lots, and I do think that the application has merit for it to proceed to council on its own merits.
Okay, we'll look for a second resolution after we go through our list of speakers. Counselor Hayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to be supporting Counselor Gill on this one. I really appreciate the staff bringing forward this corporate report because there has been a great deal of public interest in the Rosemary Heights area, particularly with that one large parcel, which would be known as the Catholic Retreat property. And so I appreciate staff bringing forward this corporate report to have a look at the whole area. But I agree that that property, 3965 156th Street, is really materially different from the others in this case, whether it's, because it's been in stream for so long, it's been under application for a long time. And as Counselor Gill pointed out, it's half-acre gross-density, and apparently, it received significant support at the public information hearing because of the low density, the nature of the low density. So I would be very willing to see that come forward to a public hearing in due course, separate from this review in the corporate report.
Counselor Villeneux.
Madam Mayor, I concur with the McDonald's application, but I also strongly agree with the last report on the review in Sunnyside Heights and the Rosemary Heights area because what these reports are saying is that we want to take six months to actually look at the area and reconnoitre, I would guess, with the school board, because the form of housing that's been built has generated more families, and so there's a real need from our position and school board's decision, I believe, that we need another elementary school. And I think the community will be happy that we're taking the time to find a location for that school, and also time to review the land use in the area as the sort of land use is changing with the number of families that are moving in the area because it is more affordable than other aspects of the South Surrey area, because we're trying to provide the affordable housing but keep up with the infrastructure as well. So I think it's a good move.
Thanks, Counselor. I think both of these reports indicate to us that, well, let's take a breather and see where we are relative to the schools, particularly as we know the problem with portables that is going to be exacerbated as a result of the recent Supreme Court decision for the class sizes. So I think this will help all around. It will also help us to have a broader conversation with whoever forms government in terms of the Minister of Education. So, relative to the R 130, so we've got it on table as it is. Counselor Gill, would you like to say on table as it is, with the exception of the McDonald's application? And somebody would think that's a friendly amendment to the, okay, second or? So, given that, all those in favor, is anyone opposed? Thank you. R 131.
Move corporate report R 131, all our relations to social innovation strategy, Phase 2 of the Surrey written Aboriginal Innovation Project, and I believe that was for $25,000.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
And finally, Madam Mayor, move corporate report R 132, the funding request for the 2017 Pulling Together Canoe Journey, and I can't remember off the top of my head if that was $6,000 or $8,000.
I think it's eight.
$8,500.
$8,500. Second or?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Revitalization from the bylaw, bylaw 1.
Move third reading on the Surrey Heritage Revitalization Agreement.
Counselor Starchak, did I, did you want to speak to this one? Okay. You're up.
Has it been seconded?
Second to put it on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, I support the proposal that's there, but I just want to make sure that we get to say that this agreement will be a very unique agreement in the sense that the Surrey firefighters will be maintaining and taking care of a museum with their own fire vehicles that are inside or that they purchased. It's the first one in B.C., it's the second one in Canada, and I believe it's the fourth one in North America, if I've got the numbers right. So I'm going with number four, but number one in B.C., so it's a very unique opportunity that's there.
That's great.
Exciting.
It's very exciting. All, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on two, second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on two, move that council support the issuance of a DVP 7916047700 upon the final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed?
Opposed.
Carried. On to Counselor Gill.
Madam Mayor, just wanted to ensure that staff do their due diligence in trying to retain that hedge and work with the applicant, if I could just mention that, please.
And let us know how that plays out before it comes to final? Okay, thank you.
Move third on three, Madam Mayor.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on three, move that the council support the issuance of DVP 7915036300 upon final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on four.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on four, move that council support the issuance of DVP 7916020200 upon the final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on five.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on five, move that council support the issuance of DVP 7916010700 upon final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on six.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on seven.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on seven, move that council support the issuance of DVP 7916032600 upon final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on eight.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Also on eight, move that council support the issuance of DVP 7916069000 upon the final, upon the final adoption of the related bylaw.
Second. In favor, opposed, carried.
On nine, on the zoning, move third.
Second. In favor. Counselor Hayne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I will be supporting this, although I certainly have a great deal of empathy for the parking issues in the Clayton area, and I saw my own words come back to remind me of that. Thank you for that. My son and daughter-in-law live there, so I visit there all the time, and I really do understand the issues. But I would hope that with the parking study that we're currently doing, that we could perhaps make comment or at least bring into scope looking at the parking numbers for those various zones. Anecdotally, I think we all know that the RF9Cs were a big, big issue when it comes to the overcrowding on street parking with the main house, with the coach house having a suite, and then many residents putting a suite into their basement as well on a, you know, a nine-meter lot that is just a recipe for street parking disaster. So I realize that that put a lot of pressure on that area. And I, we also anecdotally know that townhouses, because they don't have suites and because they have a number of visitor parking stalls and so on, put less pressure on that. But I would like to see when that parking report comes back to just have a look and make sure that we are still in keeping with what staff believes to be sufficient parking for those various zoning types. And that would, I think, give us a lot more comfort moving forward, because this particular application completely complies with the parking requirements. In fact, as somebody pointed out, has three extra stalls in the visitor area, and it completely complies with the enclave plan that was done just a few years ago in consultation with the community and the Cloverdale Community Association. So that's why I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I don't want to repeat most of Counselor Hayne's comments, but certainly, I think the Transportation Committee's done a tremendous amount of work over the last number of years on this particular topic. I think the applicant has really proven that, you know, double garage doors do have value in terms of not having a significant impact on the community with this project only having four tandem projects, or four tandem units in this particular project, given that there are 83 units in this particular project. I think that the site also has plenty of opportunity for some on-street parking, and we've done a tremendous amount of work on looking at the ratios that are required to support the visitor parking. So I'm feeling confident as we move forward that we have dealt with some of those issues in the past, and I do believe that this is going to be a very good project for the city in the future.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Starchak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also support this and truly believe that there's, that the proposal that's in front of us is not going to do anything other than provide some other space to the on-street parking that's there. But even for myself, aside from the 95% side-by-side garages that take care of the parking part of it, for me, the Energy Star building, the green building in which it's being done, is a testament to the area that's there to be able to provide housing to somebody in the future where their actual costs are going to be less than somebody else in a townhouse or apartment unit where they don't have that rating. So I support this proposal going forward.
Thanks, Counselor. I'll call the question. All those in favor? In opposition? That's carried.
Move third on 10.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on 11.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on 12.
Second. In favor, opposed, carried.
Move third on 13.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 14, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 791701500.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And that's the first example of where we're going to need these permits to accommodate the new school year.
On 15, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917015100.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 16, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917013800.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 17, move that the clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917013600.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 18, move that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute DVP 7917015200.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. That is a big, just on this particular one, that is a big reduction in parking stalls. That's almost half. Some of the others are reduced, but not to that degree. This one looks like it's going to require particular monitoring because getting kids to and from the school, even if they're not parked there during the day, just picking them up. What is the, do we have a plan for how we're going to deal with that congestion, given the lack of parking spaces to accommodate these new portables in my day? Mr. Engineer? I pick up at one of these schools, so I know that this is going to be an issue.
Yes, our, Madam Mayor, our transportation group has been working with the school board to look at specific sites and specific solutions on some of these sites. I'm just bringing it up on my mapping here. And this is one of the sites that our transportation group is working on right now. I'll get some information for you.
Okay, that would be helpful, because I know there's a cul-de-sac there that is not going to be very happy, and I not going to be very happy, and I expect that may be so if we overlay what the road network looks like with some of these other schools, so that we know what we may have to do as the school year approaches for next year. Okay. Counsel, on 18, is it?
19. On 19, Madam Mayor, move that the council support the issuance of DVP 791701130. If supported, the DVP will be brought forward for issuance and execution once the outstanding conditions have been met.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Finals? Yeah, yeah. Any persons wishing to make a representation on the close and remove of the highway of a portion of road adjacent to 16156112, 16185111A, bylaw number 19242. 39002019242, council initiative. Anyone wishing to make a representation? Final adoption, please.
Move final adoption on 20.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on 21.
Second. In favor, opposed, carried.
On 22, on the Surrey Close Movement, move that the dedication of a high proportion of road adjacent to 17710156A Avenue and 1773556 Avenue, move first.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. In favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second. In favor, opposed, carried.
On the Surrey Fee-Setting Bylaw, move first.
Second. Favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second. Favor, opposed, carried.
Third.
Favor, opposed, carried. Any notices of motion, councilors? Any other business? Hearing now, move adjournment.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.